This call, the order, the Pleasant Grove City Council meeting on this Tuesday, October the seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. We have all of our council members here this evening, along with a lot of our directors and our city administrator and others this evening. We appreciate the public that has joined us this evening and also those who have joined us remotely. We welcome you all to our meeting this evening. We'll start off this evening by having a pledge of allegiance by our chief Brown from our police department, after which we'll have opening remarks from Steve Rogers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we come before you this evening to conduct the affairs and business of our city Pleasant Grove. We're grateful to be part of the United States and the wonderful nation with the freedoms and the opportunity that we enjoy. We're grateful for our community and for the members that watch out for one another and care for one another and care deeply about the affairs of our city and want to see it prosper and want it to be a safe and beautiful place to live. Help us to conduct this business in a respectful and a understanding manner that we might have thy Spirit dwell upon us as we discuss the matters that come before us. Father, we approach thee with heavy hearts in relation to some things that have happened in our community. And we mourn with the family of this little boy who was hit. And we mourn with members of our community that have been affected by this tragedy. And we ask that they'll would bless our community, to help support one another, to help heal, to help understand and to be there in whatever capacity we can as we see other people that are struggling and that are feeling the weight of life and other things that happen. Help us to be examples to other cities of how to support and be there and to understand one another and help us to be examples as leaders of the city, that we can have thy Spirit to guide us in being calm and being understanding and comprehending the things that will help make our city a beautiful and safe and prosperous place to live. We love thee heavenly Father, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Kelton. And we'll now ask for approval of tonight's meeting agenda.
No changes, Mayor.
No changes, so ask for a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as stated.
We have a motion by council member Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Anderson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now move on to our open session this evening and invite anybody to come forward and address the council this evening. We allot time is for three minutes per person, and we have it. You'll see the timer here on the side there. And I will preface that if you're here for one of our three public hearings this evening where you will do public, we ask you to hold your comments to the appropriate public hearing that you're here for. So at this time, I open our public session and invite anybody to come forward. If you'd still just state your name for us, that'd be great. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Christine Anderson. I live just a block west of Lincoln, so I'm actually in American Fork. I serve as the chairwoman for the American Fork Planning Commission. So I'm familiar with the complexity of parking and roads and infrastructure and things like that. I know, of course, everyone here is on the same page of wanting improvement. So in the spirit of collaboration, I just wanted to offer a list of researched suggestions on possible ways to work through, possible solutions, ranging from low cost and immediate to midterm to long term. Some of the immediate ones could be staggering the start and end times at the school or partnering with a nearby church that has a parking lot that can be used as temporary parking during peak times. They could provide a shuttle during those peak times from the parking location to the school. More midterm solutions could be instigating a carpool solution, I mean, a carpool program at the school that using apps like Go Kid that would put carpools together. They could offer incentives to families that carpool. And then at the bottom, working with the city, this may be a good time for a traffic study for this area if that hasn't already been done, traffic study specifically at peak times. So mostly, I want to say thank you for all that you're doing, and I hope that that helps. Thanks.
Thank you. You know, before we have our next person come forward, I'd like to invite our city administrator, Mr. Derrington, come forward and just kind of make a couple of statements here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In fact, I talked to most of the folks as they were coming in, just letting them be aware that we do have a meeting set onsite tomorrow at one o'clock, just that we're meeting at Lincoln Academy to discuss some of these issues. We don't ever want to deny anybody the right to take their time in front of the city council. If they have proposed solutions and things, they can give it to me, and we will address these as staff and work through, you know, the things that we can or can't do based on some of these suggestions. Well, like I said, we'll be onsite tomorrow. If there's people that want to meet us up there, we can kind of walk through and talk through some of these issues tonight. Generally speaking, in a meeting like this, and I think everybody understands, as I was talking to them, that we're not necessarily going to have all the solutions figured out tonight. This can take staff a little bit of time to work through some of this. But again, we want to make sure people are heard. So if they want to come address the council, that's great. If they have things, suggestions, if they want to give that to me or talk to me or email me, we can gather all that information. The cities, we're open. We want to listen. You know, we want to see what we can do to be part of solutions up there, so.
Scott, maybe it would be helpful to explain the jurisdiction between school and city?
Yeah, so generally speaking, if we're going to be dealing with Lincoln Academy specifically, staggering start times, bus routes, things like that, those are things that the city does not control. But we are more than willing to sit down with Lincoln Academy folks and have a discussion with them to see if there are some solutions to just mitigate some of the issues they are, particularly when it's drop off and pickup time, when that street gets really busy. Hopefully, there are, I mean, just looking at this list that was handed to us, there's some good things on there, just in the one minute that I had to look at it. I think there are, we can have some very useful discussions with Lincoln Academy to try to work with them, with the understanding we don't get to control everything they do. But I would hope as a community partner, they would, and not maybe just with the city, even with members of the community. I'm assuming some of these people that live in this area have kids that go to that school as well. So love them to be a part of that dialogue as well.
And so who from staff is going up tomorrow for the meeting?
Tomorrow is me, our chief of police, Kelton Brown, and our public works director, Neil Winerton. So we would be the main three dealing with some of these. There might be some situations where our city attorney would get involved, depending on what's being requested and what we, like I said, what we can or can't do. So no, we will have, we will have department heads up there and myself as the city administrator.
Okay, thanks, Scott. With that, we'll invite anybody to come forward, continue to come forward and address the council.
It's my first time in a council meeting, so, you know, thank you. Thank you for giving us a voice here. I do want to speak for Colton that was hit. He is a neighbor of mine, and I know the family really well. There is really two issues here, I see. Number one, this is an old farm road that has never been fully modernized. And so if you want to get a good idea, I would go at eight o'clock or three o'clock and see what one of the issues are. And then again, at one thirty, when the school's fully in and you see people going up and down that road at high speed. So there's really two issues. The volume of people at Lincoln Academy during eight o'clock and three thirty around there is just getting through roads, even to get my kids over to Deerfield, which is another road over. It's impossible. I've almost been hit trying to get across there because you have lines of cars that are lined up there. And so that's one issue. And again, if they're going to add a high school, I think we've really got to talk about what's the best step for them, even though they're state-directed there. We've got to be able to protect our kids. Now, when it comes to the farm road, there, a lot of that school and a lot of the houses have come up, and I just don't think that road has been modernized. As we see, there are sidewalks in places, there's not sidewalks in places. There, there's farm fields there, there's not farm fields. And again, not all of that's in Pleasant Grove. But the stop sign right next to, I mean, just east, I think it's forty-five fifty, there's not even a crosswalk there at this point. Again, a four-way stop, again, we can add suggestions there, but a four-way stop there would be huge at slowing down traffic. In American Fork, eleven ninety east, huge to slow that down. And again, it would mitigate some of the issues with the volume of traffic, too. But again, when I come down to it, I really see that this is a workable solution, that again, I think that the council has in their hands to really make a change here. Again, even putting just a speed bump in between those two, I think would be a great solution. But I think that we're in good hands. I would love to never see this again. And again, our hearts are a little bit tender because we had another kid that was hit and killed on the other road over in Pleasant Grove, not six months ago. But thank you for my time.
Thank you. Anyone else? We thank you, and we'll now close our open session and bring it back up here to the council, and we'll continue with our next item, number six, our consent items.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'll walk out with these folks and take a few more notes based on kind of some of the comments. I just want to, if they can't make the meeting tomorrow at one, I want to make sure I get some comments tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now move on to our consent items. They're ready for your vote this evening, which consists of A, the city council minutes of September the second, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, and B, to consider approval payment number twenty-two for Big D Construction for the Cook Family Park, and C, consider for approval payment twenty-three for Big D for the Cook Family Park, and consider for approval payment number five for AWOL Construction LLC for the Winksong Drive Crestwood Boulevard to one hundred East Roadway Reconstruction and Culinary Water Project, and E, consider for approval payment number six, Dubar S. Construction Company LLC for the fifteen twenty West, eleven hundred North to eighteen hundred North Roadway Reconstruction and Culinary Waterline Project, and our last one, our payment approval report for September the seventeenth, twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
I need to recuse myself from item D because I'm related to the applicant of AWOL Construction.
So, honor.
Mayor, we'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent items as read by you.
We have a motion by council member Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Williams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We do not have board commissioner committee appointments this evening or presentations, and we'll move on to our three public hearings for this evening, and we'll move to nine A, a public hearing to consider ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero two three to amend the city code section ten dash fourteen dash twenty-four dash one dash C dash two, permitted principal uses in the Grove Commercial Sales District and add use number six two nine five tattooing to the list of permitted uses within the sub-district. The applicant is Sherwood, Iron Servitor, and the presenter is Director Cardenas.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, what we're proposing, what the applicant is proposing today is to add a new use into the Grove Commercial Sales. The use is sixty-two ninety-five tattooing. We look into this use, we analyze, if you guys had the opportunity to have the staff report, we look into different cities, how many zones this is permitted, and we did an analysis, we compared, and we, as staff, talking to the applicant, considered that as long as this use is associated with a use sixty-two thirty beauty and barber services and is only permitted on properties along State Street, it should be a permitted use. We present this to the planning commission, and we show the planning commission what we were talking about. The use where right now, because the two is permitting along State Street on the CG Commercial Zone on State Street, so now it will be permitted on the Commercial Sales Sub-District. Again, when we presented to the planning commission, we discussed some geographical constraints and a way to do it, and the recommendation was a unanimous recommendation of approval to add use sixty-two ninety-five tattooing as long as it's for properties fronting State Street and is associated with use sixty-two thirty beauty and barber services. It's very common nowadays when they build a, when they do a TI for a shell for a building, to have multiple people inside of it or multiple businesses. Some of them may do microblading, which is already permitted. Some of them may do like barber shops, some of them will do haircuts and beauty stuff, nails and that type of stuff. And one of the units is, could be tattooing if this is approved by the city council. Okay? That's what I have, Mayor and council.
Any questions for Director?
I do, specifically with regard to the permitted use of tattooing. So some cities I know only permit tattoo parlors to be, you know, they have to be a certain distance from the next tattoo parlor, for instance, in American Fork. Do we have that in our code in any place?
No. No, we don't have it. We do actually don't get a lot of applications about it, and we don't have, we thought about it, but if we have kind of like a big open place, and then we have one corner right there that has its own walls, its own business, and this tattooing, again, associated with beauty services, so by itself, the business by itself cannot be permitted, or it won't be permitted. That's what we're proposing. So we decided not to put any extra conditions on distance between them. So just as long as it's associated with this, with the, with beauty services, then we'll be okay. Tattoo parlors by itself is not permitted, or is not proposed to be permitted at this point.
Okay, so this allowed use that we're changing connects the tattoo services to a salon service.
Correct.
Business, and it cannot be a standalone tattoo. Can it be a tattoo parlor within, you know, they do like a salon kind of build out, right, and they have their own booths? And so you could have a tattoo artist that does all types of tattoos in one of those booths.
Yeah.
Alongside somebody who is.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We took that idea from the city of Orem. If you guys readily came like that, similar like that. And usually, many cities have in multiple zones. We only have in one zone, so we consider it appropriate to add it to an extra zone. But again, it's only for properties fronting State Street as well. So it's not for the boulevards or anything like that. That's another constraint.
And then the other question I had is regarding signage. So if it's in connection with a salon, does, is there anything that prohibits or limits the signage of the tattoo parlor or the tattoo services? No?
No, we already have a regulation for signage, and it's difficult to regulate the content of the sign. We usually, we can't regulate what the size, the lettering with the design, but the content of the sign is a complicated situation to do it. Usually, cities don't regulate the content of a sign.
Yeah, I mean, I can already see how I slip through a tattoo parlor if I want to on State Street in Pleasant Grove, right? But I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm just wondering if we've considered these, any of the restrictions that I know other cities have. And it sounds like you've considered them, and you think that this is.
Correct.
An adequate restriction, but still allows the service to be offered.
Correct. And yeah, and we, like I said, like I mentioned, we discussed this with the planning commission at large. The applicant had his opportunity to speak as well, and we had the chance to discuss it with the commissioners, and the recommendation is unanimous recommendation of approval, as long as these two conditions are implemented.
Anything else, council? Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you.
With that, we'll now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero two three. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up here to the council for further discussion or a motion. Council?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three to amend city code section ten dash fourteen dash twenty-four dash one dash C dash two, permitted principal uses in the Grove Commercial Sub-Sales Sub-District to add use sixty-two ninety-five tattooing to the list of permitted uses within the sub-district.
We have a motion by council member Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Williams. And we will start out with, on a roll call vote, with council member Anderson.
Yes.
Council member Rogers.
Yes.
Council member Jensen.
Yes.
Council member Ramon.
Yes.
And council member Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to our next public hearing, that's nine B, the public hearing to consider ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero two four, amend city code section ten dash fourteen dash twenty-five dash two, permitted and conditional and accessory uses in the Grove Business Park, GBP overlay, by modifying the provisions and requirements for the permitted principal uses within the Grove Business Park overlay to add a series of multiple new uses to categories to the list of permitted uses within the overlay zone. Applicant at St. John's Property, and we'll turn back to Director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, maybe this will take me a little bit more to explain. Please interrupt me if you guys have any questions, or if I'm not explaining myself correctly. Okay? So what we have right here is an application from St. John's Properties. In the city, we have a zone that is called the GBP, or the Grove Business Park Overlay. That area or that zone is applicable, or sometimes we apply it to certain areas in the Grove. Right now, we have it, that's the overlay zone that we have right here, south of Lothera. That's why they're available to, they're allowed, sorry, to do some storing, some, sorry, warehousing. That's where they're allowed to do some light manufacturing, and that's where they're allowed to do some retail, as well as specialized office as well. Okay? So we have it right here. We recently, and this map is a little outdated, oh, no, it's actually right here. You can see right here in black, and it's outdated because he doesn't have the base, but this is where Tesla is, and right behind Tesla, we have the same zone, the same overlay. In order that overlay to be applied to any area on the Grove, it has to go through a rezone. So it comes in front of the planning commission, and then it comes in front of the city council to decide whether we want to apply that overlay or not. The purpose of this overlay, again, is to provide for research, retail, office, warehousing, and specialized light manufacturing. Okay? Now, recently, we have heard the term flex space. And the term flex space, flex space, is not a land use term. It's a term that developers use for something that says like, anything goes in here. And that's not how it works for a city, right? We have to, we have to have strict parameters or clear parameters, what's permitted and what's not permitted in the zone. In the case of St. John's Properties, they have a building, two buildings right here, and they have multiple tenants. Usually, the applicant comes to us and say, hey, how about we add tattoo? Or later on, someone comes and say, how about we add gyms, and one use by use. In this case, we had a long conversation, multiple conversations with the applicant, because instead of doing one by one, there's multiple uses that the applicant is permitted to go in the zone. Okay? We, as staff, went through every single one of them. We analyzed every single one of them. We studied every single one of them. And in the discussion, during the discussion with the applicant, there were some uses that we didn't see eye to eye. Some of them, we were able to, at a staff level, to cut them off, to fix them, or to make sure that the use still meets the purpose of the zone. Some of them still have to bring it to planning commission, and we did that exercise, which was, I love how the system works. We brought the list to the planning commission, and the planning commission had concerns about one of those uses. We worked through that. The planning commission continued the use. We figured out what the applicant will be the best for the city and for the applicant, and then here we present it to you. I'm going to come and tell you which one is the one that we went back and forth with staff and with the planning commission. Let me actually show you the list of the uses that the applicant is, that the applicant is proposing to add. The uses in red are uses that don't exist in the zone, and those are the uses that the applicant is proposing to add to the list of permitted uses. For example, item use twenty-three hundred apparel and other finished products made from fabrics, leather, and similar materials. And then, for example, we work with that, and we tell the applicant, only if associated, we use fifty-six ninety. Fifty-six ninety is the retail of those products. So what we're saying is, hey, yeah, sure, we can do some, there was actually a really cool business on Lindon. I remember I used to buy, I loved to wear bracelets, and they do leather bracelets, and then they will sell them. And that was a great business that used to be said a lot. So when we talked to the applicant, those are a type of things, the negotiation that we do with the applicant. The applicant is saying, hey, I would like to do the manufacturing, because uses that start with number two are manufacturing. The manufacturing of leather fabrics, maybe can do, I don't know, clothing pieces, something like that. And we're saying, yeah, sure, it's a use that is, it will be appropriate for the zone as long as it's associated with the retail of that. So that's something that we work with it. Household and office furniture, for example, that's also good. We're saying it has to be associated with the retail as well, and it has to do, and it's assembly only, right? So we're not going to bring the raw materials and creative furniture right there. It's the assembling, the creating, and then with the retail. So we work with the applicant on many of those. Uses that start with a number four are, for example, offices, are offices uses. And we were really clear on writing right here, office, because, for example, let's talk about this one. Other telephone communications, only cable services and internet offices. You know, there's many companies, I'm just going to say a name for it, I don't even know if it exists, but let's say Comcast, and they need an office. They need a place where they can store some of the cables, but they have their offices right there, and that's what we're saying right there, office only, for any of the utility companies that exist. So those are the uses for, to start with the four. The use that we had the most, that we went back and forth, back and forth with the applicant, is automobile repair. Staff doesn't consider that automobile repair is a use that should be permitted on the zone. So we work with the applicant back and forth. The applicant explained the idea, what they had, and they told us they will do it for luxury cars. The problem is, in a land use code, it's difficult. For me, my little Volkswagen is very luxury, but for someone else, might not be. We're talking about, I don't even know the name of luxury cars, Ferraris or something like that. So it's difficult, it's difficult to quantify in land use, something like that. So we went back and forth, back and forth, exactly what will be permitted. Because once we permit, for example, mechanic shops, just like that, and say all mechanic shops, then we know the nuisances that come with a mechanic shop. Okay? So it took us probably about a month to go back and forth. We went to planning commission. The planning commission heard the applicant, the planning commission heard the staff, and at the end, we came up with something that is kind of like meeting in the middle. And this is what the use is. It says automobile repair excluding engine repair and transmission repair, what some people will call wet mechanics, right, like oil changes, that type of stuff. That's not permitted. That won't be permitted. And the next thing is very key and very important. All servicing of autos must be conducted entirely indoors, including vehicles to be serviced, meaning no outside storage or parking. Meaning no outside storage or parking of vehicles being serviced can happen. Nothing outside indoors, so.
So Daniel, give me a, give me a, for instance here, I'm, I'm struggling to try to. And so is that, is that applicable? Okay.
Yeah. So we, again, we, we don't think that mechanics as services or you're gonna go and take your car right there and they're gonna take out the engine and hang it and then gonna park the car outside without an engine for a couple of days, that, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Right, right.
That's what we're trying to avoid. So for example, and the applicant may have a chance to explain this in a better way, but you bring your, your Lambo, I'm gonna say Lambo, I wanna feel cool. When you bring your Lambo or your Porsche, is that, that's luxury, right? So you bring your cars right there and they're gonna do some high-end modifications. So there's maybe the spoiler, maybe they will change the rims, maybe they will do, I don't know. Lately, I've seen when they put, instead of painting, they put some sort of like layering or something like that. So that will be permitted. Again, everything needs to happen indoors. This is not like a use that will happen on the manufacturing zone where you can do it outside. Everything has to happen indoors, okay? That's how the, that's the work that we did and with the planning commission. And then they agreed that that will be the best case scenario and then we'll kind of like, in an effort to meet on the middle with the applicant. Auto glass installation and services, so that's another, another use that that'll be permitted. And I skip sixty-three seventy-three because warehousing is already permitted in the zone. As you guys can see, sixty-three seventy-six, general warehousing and storage. But just to be more specific, this is refrigerator warehousing or what people call climate control warehousing. So that's also added to the list of uses, okay? So this is what we presented to the planning commission, this is the end work that we did with the applicant. And we presented to the planning commission, the planning commission also forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval as the code is written. Okay, that's what I have, mayor and counsel.
Any questions more for Daniel?
I had, I had a couple of questions about the manufacturing uses that we're adding. I think that's twenty-three hundred, twenty-five-ten and twenty-five-twenty, is that right? So you said, some of these are only if associated with certain, I think, you know, retail uses as well. Is, I, I didn't see that there was any kind of restriction on the percentage of what can be used for manufacturing versus what has to be used for retail in order to be considered associated with the use? And have you discussed that or was that implemented in the code at all? Did I just miss it?
Yeah. So the use is twenty-three, so the use by itself is manufacturing. So as long as there's an outlet or an opportunity for the applicant to sell those products, that's what we consider okay. In some cases, for example, is, this is different than when a use is already permitted. For example, the missionary mall, just to give an idea. The missionary mall, if they wanna come tomorrow to that area, it will be permitted. However, the missionary mall needs an area for, 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 for storage, warehousing or something like that. In the case when the use, the use that is permitted needs to be more than fifty percent of the total, the total square footage of the, of the building.
The retail portion does.
Correct. Or the use that is permitted. For example, if I, if it's office, office is permitted, then it has to be like this. In this case, it doesn't matter if the, if the retail is smaller because the use that we're permittinging is the manufacturing. But that's why we also put right there, assembly only, more than the actually bringing the raw materials and working on it. So in this case, for example, if they wanna do, wanna use ninety percent of the building or whatever unit they're gonna use for the assembling and ten percent of the retail, it will work. It will work in this case.
Yeah, so did we consider, you know, kind of doing it the other way? Where the permitted use is fifty-six ninety, but may, but, but use twenty-three hundred may be, you know, allowed in association with that? So that it does push it over that fifty percent? You can understand why I'm saying this, right?
Totally, totally, totally. The, the, the situation here is that the applicant is not proposing retail by itself. The applicant, what the applicant was proposing was the actual manufacturing, the actually assembling of, of it. And then we took that way to say, okay, but let's add a little bit of retail on it. So again, that's, that's the applicant proposal. So he doesn't, the, the use of the retail is already permitted. If they wanna do retail and use fifty-one percent of the, of the building for, for the, for the retail and forty-nine for the assembling, that's already permitted. That doesn't need to have any change. So the applicant is proposing to switch it, to change it. That's what it is, to do a little bit of light manufacturing in there and to use most of the unit for the use that includes the manufacturing.
So just, so I understand what you said in your example because I guess it doesn't make sense to me. So we, we allow fifty-six ninety, or let's just use furniture. So if we allow fifty-seven-ten.
Correct.
So we allow the retail of household furniture. You're saying that currently, without this change, under use fifty-seven-ten, they could also have up to forty-nine percent of the space used for, for use twenty-five-ten?
Correct, that's what I said.
And so they want, they wanna have an assembly shop and then sell it maybe online so they can say, yeah, we're in association with some retail, but and that, that's what the applicant, that's what you arrived with at the applicant.
Correct. Yes, yes. You, you say way better than I say, so I appreciate that. Thank you for helping me there.
Do we distinguish between online sales and?
No.
On-site?
No.
Just sales?
Usually, because when they, when they submit the business license, we for sure check that they have a, the sales tax number associated with our city. Whether it's online sales or whether it's onsite say, sales, they still need to have at the business license the number that help us to get that money from sales tax.
Just, just one other thing, I wasn't here when the Grove zoning district was established and the overlay. But it seems to me that part of the purpose of the overlay is to establish a healthy mix of uses. And so in, I guess, and also drive sales tax and have a uniform look in, in kind of this main commercial district of our city. And so I guess my question to you is, with the allowance of some of these additional uses that are a little bit less retail friendly and a little bit more office and manufacturing friendly. Do you think we run the risk of disrupting the mix that was originally envisioned when this overlay was established?
Thank you, that's a great question. The Grove District is the entire area, right, and we had a vision for it. And then we specifically decided we created an overlay, kind of an extra set of rules. And then we decide where we want to set up those, that, that overlay. So what we're changing is not the entire Grove, what we're changing is exactly where we set up this overlay zone. So we're not changing, or for example, these uses won't be permitted everywhere in the Grove. Only in the specific areas where the overlay is established. Again, it's south of, of the Terra, behind Tesla and possible in the area of the new hotel that we just approved by, by State Street. So only on those.
Can you bring up that map again?
Yeah.
It's not the main Grove.
So it's only in this area right here, south of the Terra, only on this square right here, as, right now, that's it.
So they're not different colors right now, you're just pointing to where they are.
They are, it's just, it's difficult to see, but you can see this thicker line right here. Yes, they're different browns and, but you can see there's this thick line, for example, you cannot see it anywhere else, but that's, yeah, it's just this square right here. This right here for, for the Terra. You guys also can see a little bit of the, in my computer, it looks way better and the screen looks.
Yeah, that, that's helpful. So it's only the, those zones that are kind of in border of manufacturing zones anyway.
This one is, this one, I mean, this one is only, yeah, it's kind of like a, a deal where we work with them. And also, and also that it hasn't been rezoned, but also probably right here. It hasn't been rezoned yet, but we sign off a development agreement, we say if the hotel comes, then we'll allow that type of use. So, yeah, so again, council Rogers, it's not for the entire Grove, only on those specific areas.
Your, your colors got me up on the projector.
I know.
But I, okay, was that one, was that, I was also gonna ask you on that one quarter, was that where the fencing place was supposed to?
Yeah. All right here.
Right, right over here, okay. Anyway, okay, that, that's all the questions I had. Thanks, Daniel.
My pleasure, mayor.
Any other questions for Daniel? Not, thank you, Daniel. We'll, we'll now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council on this, on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero-two-four. And Marty, we invite you forward.
I know. You want me to wait until you close the public?
You're good.
Okay, thank you, guys. Good to be here again with you and great questions. This is, this is a little.
Thanks, Marty, I thought they were great.
Yeah, I, I liked them and, and we have some great responses too. No, um, no, it was this, this little area of the city, you know, you've got the interchange sub district of the Grove Zone. Great commercial retail vision for that for the city. And then we have this kind of little piece, it's a little bit off the beaten path, a little bit harder to get full retail. And the Grove Business Park overlay was applied to that, we built these two flex buildings. Flex is a, you know, something that we do a lot of and we think it's worked out really well as kind of a mix between a little bit of manufacturing, the very light manufacturing, some of the retail that, that is happening down there. So we felt that as we were working with the planning commission with staff, we definitely are feeling that push. It's not a manufacturing zone, it's very light manufacturing. But there are some uses that we wanted to make sure, we didn't really have specific clients or tenants that were saying, I want you to add this, I want, I wanna do this type of an office. But we said, these are all, these are all uses that make sense to be here, so why not just add them so that they're available? So we don't have to come in one at a time, ask for a use to be added. So we felt that these were good and, and we felt also with regards to the manufacturing of a few of those that, that in conjunction with the retail sales, that, that put a little bit of a constraint there to where it's not just gonna be a full-blown type manufacturing, it's assembly only, very light in, in, in that nature. So it's not gonna be very dirty and non-conducive to the area and zoning and things of that nature. So we felt it was a good compromise, I guess, to get the availability of opportunity there, but at the same time, not necessarily open it wide open to a lot of things. And, and the automotive is a, is a great example of, of a way to work in there, bring it indoors. Again, we don't want to have a big, huge, you know, car lot in the back, you know, for repairs, car, car repairs happening, things like that in the back of those buildings. It's a beautiful location right next to Tesla, right next to some of the beautiful office buildings we have down there. So we wanna keep it nice and clean as well. So we thought that was a great compromise, compromise to bring it indoor. There are, there's not really a specific use to say luxury, like Daniel was saying, a luxury car repairs only or modifications or upgrades with, whether that's shocks or whether that's a grill or that's lighting or, you know, a backup camera. You know, that's all under your automotive repair use, but yet you couldn't do it individually. And so we felt like that, that was a good compromise to be able to do that, so. Just, if you could go up, just, maybe I have to go up. I just wanted to clarify, and Daniel said one thing, and I think that there, there are a few of these that are, that are offices. For example, the electric company office, gas, water. But the office only ones that Daniel was referring to are the forty-eight forty-six and the forty-eight fifty-three. Those two are not the warehousing portion, as you know, flex has a great office warehouse, some retail mix. But one of the fillings of staff and, and in agreement with planning commission, they, they said those two uses, they'd prefer them not to have a big warehousing area where they're storing maybe things that aren't conducive, I guess, to that area. If they have a back warehousing area that they're storing some of their supplies or something, sewer, refuse or disposal company may not have the most clean stuff. And so I think that was their recommendation. So those two are office only, the other ones are offices and could be in conjunction with the warehouse as long as the office, like you've talked, is fifty percent or more of the building and the warehousing could be the other portion. Is that correct, Daniel? Does that, that make sense? Okay. So anyways, we're, we're grateful for you considering this, we think it's a great opportunity down there. And we think that this, this flex really does bring, especially in this location, we've had a really good success. We're filling all those up, we feel like that there's a good mix of a lot of different tenants, but also bringing in some of the retail and, and capitalizing on that as well for the city with sales tax and we think it's a great use for that area, so.
Thank you, Marty.
Questions that you have? Thank you.
Okay, as, and I don't think there is, but if anybody would like to come forward and address us before we close our public hearing. Okay, I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing, bring it back up here to the council for further discussion or a motion. Counsel?
All right, mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero-two-four as read.
Okay, we have a motion from council member Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for council member Lamone. And with that, we will start out at our roll call vote with council member Anderson.
Yes.
Council member Rogers.
Yes.
Council member Jensen.
Yes.
Council member Lamone.
Yes.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Thank you, that's a unanimously, we'll, thank you for that. And we'll now move on to our last public hearing, our last item this evening. I'd see the public hearing to consider ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero-two-five to, to amend title eight utilities, chapter six, stormwater subdivision five, conveyance and discharge of stormwater subsections eight dash six dash eight, land disturbance permit process and title eleven dash seven dash eight, site plan requirements for permitted and conditional uses. Subsection F two, adding a specific method for storm drainings calculations and providing for an effective date.
We've been waiting for this one, Neil, we've been waiting for this one.
And we'll give you three minutes.
Almost as good as tattoos and luxury modifications is stormwater language. This is, this is it. I have a nineteen ninety-nine Chevy Blazer and it's out in the parking lot. It's gone through four teenage driving daughters. So I might, I might need these services.
Sounds like you got a spot finally to suit it up.
You'll be glad it's indoors.
It better fit indoors.
Yeah, yeah, you'll, you'll be glad it's indoors. In November of twenty twenty-four, I reported that the state of Utah Division of Water Quality performed an audit on the Pleasant Grove City Stormwater Program. From that program, there were about eighty-four items, I think it was eighty-four, that we had to respond to and essentially fix. Baylor Hatch affectionately, that I call Baylor Swift, because it sounds like Taylor Swift. Baylor Swift has, has taken the charge to address these issues. It's been a pretty big deal, I, I mean, it, it really has been. They only do a few municipalities a year and I think they probably went alphabetically and so we've, we've dodged this for quite some time. So this is the first of a few items to bring to you that we will need to approve as part of that. This language, we have already submitted to the state to see if it would satisfy what they wanted to see in our code. There's three main things that they wanted to see and that was permitted discharges, not what's not allowed, but what is allowed. And that's what's changing. So those are in there, you can see them in your packet. And then there is the requirement for filling out an online permit for the state. And not only filling it out and applying for it, but closing it out. What, what the state had found is that filling out the requirement was happening, but then those applicants weren't closing it out. So we've added that language that you have to apply for it and then close it out. And then probably the most significant and fun and interesting is we had to describe which engineering method the engineers were going to use to calculate the runoff from a site. And it's the rationale method, I mean, I'm sure you're all familiar with that. So that is what is in this code. And so if you approve this, that will satisfy some of the things we need. And then I'll bring to you an updated document in the next session or two that will complete our audit. And again, staff, there's been other staff members that have helped and modified and done great things, top to bottom and across the board. But Baylor has really put a lot of time and effort and deserves a pat on the back for this one, if you see him. for this one, if you see him.
So when was the last time you think we had this audit?
We've never had this audit, uh, before, as far as I know.
Okay.
The state started auditing, I don't, maybe ten years ago with the program that was implemented.
And so it might be another ten years?
Might be. Yeah, it might be.
Was there anything on the list that you were surprised at or that you were concerned with or not necessarily?
Um, I don't know that there was any surprises, lots of concerns, lots of things that we, we knew we had to do. And there were some things that, uh, we, we did in anticipation of an audit. So, I mean, maybe the biggest surprise was that we actually came out okay. Some municipalities were, were fined quite heavily, uh, for some of the things they weren't doing. And I think we had some areas that were exposed that we need to do better. Uh, but there were also some things spotlighted that were highlighted as doing really well. So, um, I, I think that would be how I would address that.
Thank you.
I mean, one of the concerns, I don't know if the concerns may be a strong word, but the, the, on the second part where we're kind of having to be the state's babysitter of the permit, um, are we then, you know, liable for anything if the permit lapses and they don't renew it? Or is, are we, is the city taking on any responsibility that way to ensure compliance by, uh, the developer of the construction site?
We, we are the ones who enforce these ordinances. So yes, to, to answer that question, yes. Top to bottom, the state has said you as a city and your permit are required to do these things. And so, yeah, we, we are the ones responsible to enforce all of that.
Okay. Did you ask them for any money to help us pay for that?
Well.
Because I think they asked us for money for them to come check our water, right? So maybe we could ask them for some money so we can help them with their permitting?
One way.
Uh, yeah, I know that. But the other thing is just stylistically, and I don't know if this is for you, I just noticed that the new ones are capitalized letters and whereas the current code is lowercase letters. Yeah, I just, yeah, that bugs me.
I don't know if I just. Yeah.
I, I assumed it was a, probably a word processing thing, but.
That bugs Tina too.
Yeah, so.
Well, thanks Baylor for us. Um, this is very, this is impressive. I remember when American Fork had theirs, uh, and I think they, that was probably ten years ago, so.
I, I think, I think it is good that we only have this changes in our code. This is actually relatively minor in our code to change. We have a manual that goes with this code that's quite thick and there's quite a few changes with that, quite a few procedural changes we've had to make. And, and at some point, I'll maybe give a little highlight of that when we bring that manual and, and show some of the changes. But, um, overall, I would say we, we did, we didn't get an A-plus, but we didn't get a D-plus either.
Do you anticipate anything else coming up to us from those eighty-four items? Or is this all that we're going to have to look at?
No, we are on the very, uh, tail end of things. We have been periodically submitting, uh, pieces and parts of those items and they've come back approved. And so we're, we're at the very tail end. The next document is, this had to be done first so that this document could then come secondly.
Okay.
Did they give you a deadline to have the items completed?
We did, we did. I, it's mid-November or, or it's coming up. I know that. Yeah.
I guess that's your cue.
I, I do, at some point, though, I do want to hear about the hundred-year storm that we had, and I'm just wondering how we did, by the way, in the stormwater.
We, we didn't experience that here. Salt Lake did. That cell went over Salt Lake.
Twilla did, yeah.
And Twilla, yeah.
We didn't get hit that bad.
We didn't? So we didn't hit the two inches?
No, our stormwater system, uh, performed, uh, well.
Okay.
We didn't have any known flooding.
Did we fill up any of the soccer fields?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Cool.
One point two. We just got our grass water drilled in.
Yeah.
So, any other thing for, uh, the director? No. Okay, thanks, Neil. With that, we, uh, will now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council on ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two-four.
Oh, whoa, here we go.
Okay, start the clock and take three minutes off.
Okay. I just have a few thoughts about this. I am just so grateful that Neil had to handle this one.
That's your public comment?
I want to actually just congratulate you guys. This is, you don't know how big of a effort this takes. And I, I, it just hung over my head for years that we knew it's coming, we didn't know it when it's coming, we were making these upgrades and things with our engineers and doing what the state was required. We knew eventually we would have to bite the bullet and get all of these things done. And I think they have done an amazing job, so I just want to congratulate them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marty.
And before I close the public hearing, you know, Neil, thank you and your staff because you've got some good guys down there and, and, uh, they're going in the right direction. So thank you for what they, uh, do for our city. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up here to the council for any further discussion or a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion of celebration of approving ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-twenty-five to amend title eight utilities, chapter six, stormwater subsection five, conveyance and discharge of stormwater, and subsections eight dash six dash eight, land disturbance permit process, and title eleven dash seven dash eight, site plan requirements for permitted and conditional uses, subsection F-two, adding a specific method for storm drainings calculations, providing for effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Councilmember Lamone. And with this time, we're going to start out with, uh, on our roll call vote with Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. That concludes all of our business for this evening. And I think we've pretty well taken care of all of our items that we have. And unless our, uh, city administrator has anything else for us?
No, Mayor. I mean, I, I talked with residents for a few minutes and took, took some notes and, uh, we'll meet with them, uh, tomorrow at one o'clock, so.
Will you just, will you just kind of maybe send out an email or a text to us, just kind of updating us on?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say the few minutes out there, these folks are, they're in, they, they want solutions, they're not angry, they're not blaming us for stuff, they just want to see some things done out there. And I think we're in a good spot with them. So, well, there's, there's some things I think we're going to be able to do. We'll, we'll meet with them and get things figured out.
And thank you, Scott, for all your work on this and, and helping us and, and especially diffusing what could have been a, uh, a really tense evening here. So thank you for your work on that and your continued work with you and our other directors and our chief. And I will give the council one more opportunity if you have anything to bring up before we close.
I know that, uh, we have all shed tears about this. This has been very, very sad. This is just such a sad, sad situation. So thank you very much for, um, listening and, um, we don't want it to happen again. I know it's been a constant concern of ours is the safety of citizens. And so, um, we just don't want it to happen again.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to say, Mayor, that I didn't, I've, I've only been on the council for a couple of years and in, and like was mentioned earlier, I mean, we've had these two tragedies in short succession. And I just have to say that it is a unique privilege to sit on the city council because I think it, I think it connects you to your community in, in a way that I didn't necessarily expect. And so when these, information about these things happen and we get it from our first responders that are out there immediately helping, it, I mean, it, it affected me personally, both of these tragedies that have happened in the last six months for, for days, as we try and see what's happening, try and understand what happened, to try and figure out what we can do to ensure that it doesn't happen again. And, um, I, I just, I just think it's, it's a privilege to be able to feel that connection with people in our community that I don't even know, I don't necessarily interact with, but that I just appreciate how difficult of a time a lot of our citizens are going through. And, and I just, you know, I think we, we made it clear is that as a council, we want to do what we can, not only as council members, but as human beings, to help the members of our, our community be safe and, uh, and, and have a wonderful, beautiful community to live in, so.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, for that. You know, it's, it's, uh, amazing, there's six of us that, from our community, that represents our community here as elected officers. And it's unique in that we have the inside look of what's going on in the city that our citizens don't, and we kind of have to share that with them and, and, uh, hope they understand that. So thank you.